All right. Good evening, Commissioners, and over to you Chair Harrington.
Oops. Good morning. Good evening, everyone. We've had a long day today. We started our meetings at 10:00 this morning, so. Good evening. Welcome to the Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024 Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting. Clerk Moss, could you please do us the formal honors?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. The Washington County Board of Commissioners also meeting as the Board of Directors for Clean Water Services and all other county services districts is now meeting this regular session, October 22nd, 2024. Commissioner Treese?
Here.
Commissioner Willie?
Here.
Commissioner Rogers?
Here.
Vice Chair Fai?
Present.
Chair Harrington.
Here. All right. Thank you for joining us, Commissioner Rogers, and we understand you have a cold and appreciate that you're staying on mute until you have some things to say. And I know you'll wave us down, raise your hand, all that stuff, so. For our agenda tonight, we had the original posted agenda, and after that, item F1 was an added item that's under our Action Items section, and then item H1 was updated. That brings us to our first public comment period of this evening's meeting. This is an opportunity for members of our community to come and testify, share your thoughts with the board on any topic you would like for up to two minutes, an individual, 10 minutes total. Clerk Moss, how many do we have signed up?
We have seven signed up, Madam Chair.
Okay, so we chatted about this as a board earlier, and our preference is to allow all seven of you to testify tonight for up to two minutes. I do realize, as Presiding Officer, that that does provide more than 10 minutes, but we wanted to give you that opportunity. So we'll go through the seven who have signed up. Clerk Moss?
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair. So I'll call you up in two. So first up, we have Dale Feek and Katie Riley, followed by Bob Seward and Jaclyn Poppin.
So wait, so he announced the first two, and then he announced the second two, just so that you're at the ready to know that you'll be next. So go ahead, Mr. Feek, whenever you're ready.
She said, "Go ahead when I'm ready." Chair Harrington, I'm ready. And Commissioners, I'm Dale Feek, resident of Forest Grove since 1966. I sent you an email, and then you have a handout in front of you now. That's taken from Democracy Awakening: Notes on the State of America by Heather Cox Richardson. She's a historian and a professor, and she writes letters daily, and I read those letters. So this letter is October 22nd. On Saturday, September 7th, Republican presidential candidate Donald Trump predicted that his plan to deport 15 to 20 million people currently living in the United States would be bloody. He also promised to prosecute his political opponents, including lawyers, political operatives, donors, illegal voters, and election officials. Retired Chair of the Joint Chiefs of Staff Mark Milley told journalist Bob Woodford that Trump is a fascist to the core, the most dangerous person in the country. On October 14th, Trump told Fox News Channel host Marie Bartiroma that he thought enemies within the United States were more dangerous than foreign adversaries, and he thought the military should stop those radical left lunatics on Election Day. Since then, he has been talking a lot about the enemy from within, specifically naming Representative Adam Schiff, Nancy Pelosi, and other Democrats from California. They're bad people. Trump's reference to the enemy from within has become so frequent that former White House Press Secretary Psaki has called them his closing argument for the 2024 election, and she warned that his construction of those opposed him as enemies might sweep in virtually anyone he feels as a threat. In a serious article, October 22nd, Political Science, Bike Koffer explored exactly what that means in a piece titled "What Really Happens If Trump Wins," outlined Hitler's January 30th, 1934 oath of office, in which he promised Germans he would uphold the Constitution
-- Thank you, Mr. Feek.
-- in three months he took to dismantle the Constitution. Thanks for listening.
Ms. Riley, go ahead.
Chairman Harrington and -- Chair Harrington and Commissioners, thank you for having me speak. I am a resident of Hillsborough. First of all, I wanted to commend Washington County Elections Department for their efficiency and for their very stringent following of laws regarding election, and that is greatly appreciated. But I primarily wanted to come and thank you all for your letter of support for our Washington County Kids' proposal to the Meyer Memorial Trust to be able to fund a needs analysis of after-school and summer programs in Washington County. We greatly appreciate your support and also following through very quickly so that we could get the letter submitted with our proposal. Thank you so very much.
Welcome. Thank you. Who's next? Clerk Moss?
So we had Bob Seward and Jackie Poppin.
Thank you for holding this hearing, and I came here because I have some very strong feelings about our election system. I'm a retired physician. I came out here in 2007, retired, started voting here. At first, I thought this is crazy to have vote by mail. I really wanted to go to the booth, which I did for my whole life, but the more I looked, the more I acted or voted here in this system, the more I appreciated how smart it was, that you have to go in and you have to sign your -- put your signature down. It's like a fingerprint. So they -- it's very hard to do fraud in this system. I like the fact that you could stay home, especially true for disabled people, if the weather is inclement. And then, over the years, the system has proved itself out. And if you have questions about it, you can go to the professionals, the Secretary of State, you can go to the County Elections Commission. They're wide open. It's transparent. They'll answer all your questions. You can go onto the website and answer your questions. As far as the fraud, I looked this up today. It's off the Secretary of State's website. Between 2019, 61 million votes were cast, and of those 61 million votes, there were only 38 criminal convictions. That's a number. I'm just thrilled because I know the people are going to come in and try to say that there's fraud and there's this and that, but it's very hard to prove that here with our system. You might be able to get away with that in other states, but --
Thank you, Mr. Seward.
-- you can't here. So thank you for receiving my comments and --
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jackie Poppin, and I've been a 12-year resident of Washington County. And here we are again, citizens gathered, addressing our concerns about the trustworthiness of our elections. As you can see, we are dedicated to this cause, and for good reason. Self-governance is a cornerstone of our constitutional republic, and if we don't fight to retain it, then we are guilty of squandering bloodshed by many to ensure our right to life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Our hope has been to have a dialogue with you, to share with you what we have learned over the last three years. We wanted to get past the standard slogans such as "safe and secure" and look at the things we have discovered through our investigations that are frankly disturbing. We asked many of you for a work session so that we could begin this dialogue, but thus far, you have collectively drawn a line in the sand by your unwillingness to meet with us. Then, when we saw that our tax dollars were used to pay for videos intended to make the public feel good about our elections despite all the underlying issues, we decided that we needed to let our voices be heard. We decided to bring our findings and stories to a public forum because our fellow citizens needed to be informed, as do you. As we have said before, we are not here to accuse any person but to expose flaws in the election system. It is a system issue, not a people issue. We want our county to lead the state in breaking free of this failed system. We are asking you, as county leaders, to change the election system in Washington County. You were elected to represent the people of our county, and if you would do this, we would gladly support you. Thank you for the time. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Next, we have Kim Rice and Zoe Mackey.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Kim Rice, 10-year resident of Washington County, and I'm here this evening to tell you about Tom and Ann, my friends who asked me to share their story with you. Tom and Ann are longtime residents of Washington County. For years, Tom used his Washington County work address as his mailing address and received ballots there. Earlier this year, he changed jobs and now works in another county. Wanting to continue receiving his ballots at work, he submitted a change of address, mailing address, online on the Secretary of State website, and received confirmation that the change was accepted. On October 11th this month, he double-checked his record and was surprised to learn that the Washington County mailing address was still the one listed, meaning his ballot will be sent to his former employer with which he has no longer any affiliation. He immediately contacted the Washington County Elections Office. The elections worker changed his mailing address but told him that two ballots would be printed with his name on them, one sent to each mailing address in each county. To prevent double-counting, the elections office only counts the first one submitted. The question is, which one will it be? The event, coupled with Ann's own experience of having her entire voting history accidentally wiped clean at the DMV for no reason in 2020, has left them completely disillusioned with our system. They have contacted Judicial Watch. This is just one family's experience with our voter rolls and with our vote-by-mail system, which is cumbersome, inflexible, and fraught with errors. The system failed them both. I'm asking you to exercise our county's right to disengage from the failed centralized voting system and bring our elections back under county and precinct rule, back to us, the people to whom the elections belong. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Zoe Mackey. I was a registered environmental health specialist with Multnomah County for two years, and now I work in Hillsborough in the private sector as an environmental health specialist, and I'm a Beaverton resident. And I come today to talk about, for you -- to implore you to consider, in the 2025-26 SHS budget, to talk about mental health. I think you, as a board, and the SHS staffs, who are incredibly talented, have a hard job, especially with Metro. I've been watching your work sessions about Metro's play to gain control and power, and it's frankly, it's appalling. But as an inspector, I saw a lot of traumatizing things. I have seen people with mental health living on the streets, and it was incredibly hard to watch. And I understand that we need to keep people housed. I'm not saying to change the budget, but I think as the state is not stepping in and Metro being mostly in Portland, having a housing-first mentality and approach that will not work for these populations, as someone who has family who are addicts and also mentally ill, I've seen them have their struggles with staying housed and also being affected as a family member and drawing the line with addicts. And, you know, public health is not easy, and as the contractors for -- with SHS, they are trying to do the best they can with their funds, and I think their plans are great, but the fact that it's not included, the mental health portion, in the 2025-2026 budgeting process, it's unacceptable, in my opinion, just because we are so far into this crisis. And I think we, as in this county, and I'm so proud to be a resident, have the opportunity to set the standard, that this is what the future could be, and we need to protect, not only us as residents, but these people who are in a fragile time. So thank you for your time and have a great day.
All right. The last one we have, Madam Chair, is Joseph Offe. Joseph?
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. Years ago, Washington County Board of Commissioners adopted ordinance 8.56.050.a. This ordinance prohibits burning yard debris in unincorporated areas of Washington County that are eligible for yard debris pickup. I'm very appreciative that the county created this ordinance. I am here tonight to request expanding this ordinance for a countywide outdoor burn ban. Cornelius, Forest Grove, and the eastern side of Hillsborough are next two rural areas. As a resident living in this part of the county, I smell smoke frequently. Today, the air around Free Orchard Elementary School, where my children attend school, smells strongly of smoke. The smoky air has prevented my family from opening our house windows, from us doing yard work, and from our kids going outside to play in our yard. According to an Air Force Corps of California study, wood smoke is considered 10 times more harmful to humans than car exhaust. Our harmfulness is largely due to fine particulate matter burning wood curates. In February of 2023, the city of Hillsborough had an air quality index of over 100. My family saw massive wood piles burning on the coastal range side of Washington County on our way to the coast. We can only assume these massive wood piles caused the poor air quality for Hillsborough, Cornelius, and Forest Grove during this time, which is strange because it's winter and there's no wildfire season. This October, we have seen an air quality index of over 50 for several days this month. I understand doing a countywide burn ban may impact farmers. I'm hoping the state and county can do work with these farmers to find alternatives other than burning. If we are truly concerned about air quality, we should look at doing something about outdoor wood burning, not just car emissions. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, that concludes the list of signups in the room. Would you like to ask online or move to --
We've already extended our time for this evening.
All right, we'll move on.
Okay. Next, we have tonight's consent agenda, which consists of nine items. Six items from Clean Water Services, one item from Health and Human Services, and two items from Land Use and Transportation. What are the wishes of the commission for tonight's consent agenda?
Move to accept.
Second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Next, we'll move on to proclamations. And tonight, we have a proclamation to proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month. Oh, wonderful. Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Amanda Garcia Snell, Community Engagement Manager and Temporary Deputy Chief Equity and Inclusion Officer for the county. I'm honored to introduce this proclamation, as well as offer a few introductory remarks. Washington County Cultural Heritage celebrations and resource pages are an important starting point for our collective organizational engagement and learning about equity, diversity, and inclusion. They offer an opportunity to enter into and strengthen relationships with staff and community who recognize the important role that Native American community members play in the diversity of Washington County. The Native American community, like all cultures, is not monolithic. It encompasses a range of diverse life experiences and opinion. Consequently, the celebrations and resource pages may not present a comprehensive picture of the nuances or full range of opinions within any culture or subculture. The Native American Heritage Month celebrations we will be enjoying have been planned and organized by numerous staff who volunteer to support our learning in addition to their official work. This is also done in partnership with Clean Water Services. We encourage anyone who is curious to learn about -- to learn more, to reach out to OAICE, the Office of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement, or open a dialogue with colleagues or the planning committee. I want to thank all the members of the committee who met over the past few weeks utilizing a shared leadership model. This small but mighty committee included Shana Johnson, Megan McKibben, Cheyenne McLeighton, Ashley Horn, Latricia McCauley, Jeff Frazier, Sandra Boyer, Aika Falstrom, and several partners at Clean Water Services. With that, I would like to turn it over to Megan McKibben to read the proclamation.
Thank you, Amanda. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Board of Commissioners. As stated already, my name is Megan McKibben. I am an employee of Washington County and proud member of the Cherokee Nation. I am honored to read this proclamation tonight. Whereas -- Proclamation. Board of Commissioners for Washington County, a proclamation in honor of Native American Heritage Month. Whereas, Washington County is committed to creating an inclusive community that celebrates diversity and ensures all residents have equitable opportunities to lead healthy, peaceful, safe, and sustainable lives. And whereas, in honoring the cultures, traditions, and accomplishments of Native Americans that have shaped our country, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, violence, and genocide upon indigenous people. And whereas, the area currently known as Washington County, Oregon rests on land that was first inhabited by the Atulati Kalipuyans, also called the Twolotin people, who flourished here for thousands of years. And whereas, settlers began arriving in what would become Washington County in the 1830s to take land from the Atulati that was not ceded nor paid for until 1855 under the Willamette Valley Treaty, which was signed with many other tribes. And whereas, the Atulati signed an 1851 treaty with the United States, which was never ratified, in 1855 signed the Willamette Valley Treaty, which was ratified, ceding all of their lands to the United States in exchange for a permanent reservation, supplies, and services. And whereas, the Atulati were forcibly removed from their homeland to the Grand Ron Indian Reservation in 1856, which is where they were mistreated by the United States government and Indian agents, being denied land, adequate food, medicines, and services for nearly 20 years, causing many Native people to live in poverty and to suffer untimely deaths. And whereas, the first offered reservation Indian boarding school in Oregon was established in Forest Grove. Many Native students from area reservations were removed from their families and sent there to assimilate to white culture, deliberately to disconnect them from their native culture and language. This disconnection from their community, identity, and culture continues to persist through generational trauma and hardship. And whereas, the Grand Ron Indian Reservation was terminated by the United States Congress in 1954 in Public Law 588, causing the displacement and disenfranchisement of thousands of Native peoples of Oregon, including the Atulati peoples, who were then forced to leave the former reservation, causing further loss of Native languages and cultures. And whereas, the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon was reestablished as recognized Native Nation in 1983 under Public Law 98165 with the Atulati people as members, beginning the process of restoring the tribe, community, and cultures of the tribal nation. And whereas, the Atulati people endure to this day as members of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon, having survived catastrophic diseases, loss of their ancestral lands, forced relocation to reservation, family separations through the removal of children to boarding schools, and termination. And whereas, after overcoming numerous setbacks over the years to regain treaty-acquired land and federal recognition as a sovereign nation, the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron established a successful government to serve the needs of their members and also generously support the advancement of underserved communities throughout northwest Oregon. And whereas, we seek to repair the trauma of past oppression and broken trust, both locally and regionally, by lifting up indigenous cultures and voices and striving together to build a future of shared hope and promise for all. Now, therefore, be it resolved that on this 22nd day of October 2024, the Washington County Board of Commissioners does hereby proclaim November 2024 as Native American Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of indigenous people, to raise awareness about our shared history, and acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made to our community and our nation.
Thank you very much, Megan. Commissioners, what are your wishes with regard to today's proclamation?
Enthusiastically seconded.
All those in favor of adopting the red proclamation, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Would you like to join us for a photo? And then, any members of the planning committee or any Washington County employees who would like to join us, please feel free to do so. All right. Next, we're going to move on to public hearings. Excuse me, public hearings. First, I need to ask for a motion to read A Engrossed Ordinance numbers 901 and 902 by title only.
So moved.
Again, that. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Ms. Duke Dreesen, could you please do so?
My pleasure, Chair. A Engrossed Ordinance Number 901, an ordinance amending the comprehensive framework plan for the urban area and all community plans relating to development in areas designated significant natural resources. And A Engrossed Ordinance Number 902, an ordinance amending the community development plan relating to development in areas designated significant natural resources.
Thank you. So before we move to the staff report, for the sake of our audience, either in the room or online or viewing this meeting, after the fact, tonight, we will be conducting the second public hearing, and then after that, we will take a motion to continue the public hearing to next Tuesday, November 5th's meeting. So first, the staff report. Welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and members of the board. My name is Erin Wardell. I am the Assistant Director of the Department of Land Use and Transportation, and with me is Michelle Miller, Senior Planner, who will cover tonight's staff report.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners.
My name is Michelle Miller, Senior Planner with Land Use and Transportation. I'm here to present the staff report for A Engrossed Ordinances Numbers 901 and 902. Those are amendments to the county's Goal V program for significant natural resources. The Planning Commission considered the ordinances over three -- three Planning Commission meetings over this summer. On September 4th, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the ordinances with the recommendation of engrossment. On October 1st, the board conducted the public hearing and ordered engrossment of both ordinances before you this evening. Tonight's public hearing is the Tonight's public hearing is the first of two required engrossment hearings on the ordinances. The second board hearing is scheduled for November 5th. Ordinance Number 901 includes a comprehensive framework plan changes to update our policy on significant natural resources. It also includes amendments to Policy 41, which is a map of the significant natural resources in urban growth expansion areas to reflect our inventory. It also includes amendments to our community plans, where we're removing the design elements that are no longer applicable or are not clear and objective, and also includes map updates to our community plans of the significant natural resources to reflect our inventory changes. A Engrossed Ordinance Number 902 is our amendments to our Community Development Code. We separate the urban regulations from those in the rural areas, so our regulations are about the urban unincorporated area. The rural regulations will remain unchanged. It exempts certain development activities from the standards. We've created a new Type 1 tree removal permit for significant habitat. There are development standards for riparian wildlife habitat areas with, with also a clear and objective path for tree retention and replacement requirements for the upland wildlife habitat and with two alternative discretionary paths that includes tree retention and replacement. And then also, there are other amendments throughout the code, Section 422, for clarity and consistency. On October 1st, at the board hearing, the board voted unanimously to engross these ordinances. A Engrossed Ordinance 901 includes some map changes to the community plans that were received from property owners by our August 31st deadline that are consistent with the criteria used to develop our initial inventory. A Engrossed Ordinance Number 902 are changes to the Community Development Code, Section 422, our Significant Natural Resource Chapter. These changes include clarifications to the land uses that are exempt from the requirements, as well as other modifications to the allowance for a Type 1 tree removal, and also our, a reduction for the tree retention and replacement standards on smaller sites that are under two acres in size, and other clarifications that are found throughout Section 422. So staff's recommendation this evening is to conduct the hearing for A Engrossed Ordinance Numbers 901 and 902, and then continue the hearing to November 5th.
Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions on the A Engrossed Ordinances as we formed them up in a prior meeting before we go to tonight's public hearing? With that, I'd like to open this public hearing. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone who wishes to testify?
Yes, we do, Madam Chair. First two we have up is Leonard Whitman and Andrea D'Amico.
Go ahead, Chair.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for having me here tonight. I just have a brief thing I want to mention. Again, my name is Leonard Whitman, and I have lived in Washington County since 1966 when my family moved here. My sister and I still own the home that we moved into in 66. I've lived, learned, gone to school, graduated, all while we lived in Washington County. Long time. The reason I'm here tonight is when we were here for the most recent public hearing prior to this one, we learned that we would have the opportunity to have the maps that were proposed in Ordinance 901 changed, and there would be a process for submitting that proposed change. The reason we're interested in that is that this family home that we've had since 1966 has been enclosed by this proposed map by two-thirds. In other words, two-thirds of the home is surrounded by this new boundary, and our interest is in having that changed, and we just want to have a method, a process that we can follow for having that changed. That process hasn't been revealed yet, and we just want to know when it will be revealed so we can go ahead and follow that process. So I just wanted to go on record for asking for that process and asking when that process would be revealed to us. So that's all.
Thank you for sharing that question with us.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Andrea D'Amico. I'm a member of Save Shoals, and I preside in Washington County. Let me first thank staff for their countless hours to study and update our SNRs. Mitigation is not equal to SNRs. The proposed mitigation being part of a future work program is just kicking the can. If there is a future work program, program monitoring the mitigation, the dead saplings will be replanted in two years, and then what happens after that? Do you really think the HOA property owners or apartment managers will monitor it? The pictures I showed at last meeting, it was a replanning after two years, and now they're dead again, and no one cares, and the SNR is gone forever, and the mitigation has failed, and there is no recourse. There are developers that care and ones that don't. There's a development off a rude bridge called Meyer Woods, and the SNRs was actually incorporated into the neighborhood. Then there are areas like Shoals Heights, Shoals Heights, where the SNRs were mitigated, and now they're nothing but landfills. There needs to be a better solution. There needs to be a reinforcement and clarity. And now, the area outside the UGB, we are told is not being changed. Then why is it in any, why is it included in any of the, in 901 and 902? Let the rural land have the Goal 5 protection. Let the Oregon Department of Fish and Wildlife and Clean Water Services set the standards. 901 and 902 have followed the setbacks of their standards, but what happens if they change the standards? Will it be updated? Would there be another ordinance? Leave the rural land out of 901 and 902. We have less than 3,900 acres left of SNRs. Why not just preserve them opposed to destroy them? We need to care about the future of Washington County for our kids and our grandkids so that they'll be able to fish in streams, see wildlife in the woods, and the mitigation program does not provide that at all.
Thank you.
Sorry if I went over.
Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Was there anyone else that wished to testify this in the auditorium? Mr. Terry?
I just had one quick question on Ordinance 901 and 902 at this point, and I think everybody knows who I am. If you need for the record, this is Bob Terry, former county commissioner. But what is significant habitat? How do you describe that? Is that one snail daughter, three crickets, and two frogs? I don't understand what they're saying. When we pass these kind of ordinances, there's unintended consequences, as both of these two people pointed out here this evening, prior to myself. But I don't know what significant habitat means. As being a farmer, that was always a real concern to us because we always got trapped in that, that kind of language. So I don't expect you to answer tonight, but it would be something that perhaps staff could look at, and maybe on November the 5th, we could have an answer. Thank you very much.
That concludes in the room, so we'll move to online. Jody, Jody, and then Dale.
Commissioner and Chair, thank you for hearing us again. I was here last time testifying, and I just wanted to correct my, what I said because I was talking, and I don't see it in the engrossed either, where pod villages are allowed in riparian zones. And I brought up Dairy Creek, and in fact, it's the west fork of Dairy Creek, not the east fork. That is by Winco. And that certainly needs to have clarification on how that can exist in a riparian zone. I would entertain you to go down there with police officers and cameras and take a picture of what's happened to the west fork of Dairy Creek. And it's my understanding that that was to be decommissioned when Aloha and Cornelius Pod Villages were completed, which they are and have been for some time now. So once again, I would like to know where in these new SNRs a pod village is allowed in a riparian zone. Thank you.
Mr. Feek.
Chair Harrington, I'm Dale Feek, Chair of the Washington County Citizen Action Network, and we have board members on our Washington County Citizen Action Network have been very clear in presenting their information to you as Board of Commissioners on significant natural resources. We've sent to you written comment. We've been informed. We appreciate what the staff has done and had their meetings and had all the maps out and were very clear about what the national, significant natural resources are in the county. And it's important for people to be informed when they talk about national, significant natural resources in the county and just not off the cuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Feek. We'll now move to online. So first up, we had Eve Goldman. Eve, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Great. Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Eve Goldman, and I represent the Tualton River Keepers. I appreciate you all being here on what sounds like a very long day for you all. While TRK is pleased with the LUT staff and Board's efforts to make substantive amendments to both ordinances following public testimony, comments, and public hearings, these amendments don't address some of our main concerns. The methods for determining proposed riparian buffer zones are still inadequate and fail to sufficiently protect riparian wildlife habitat from pollution and erosion. Under the CDC's proposed methodology 2 for determining riparian wildlife habitat boundaries, the minimum riparian buffer width is listed as 50 feet for all water areas except the Tualton River, which has a minimum riparian buffer width of 125 feet. While the methodology 2 permits the riparian buffer to extend to a maximum of 200 feet, this buffer range does not adequately provide protection of riparian habitats, and we urge the Commissioners to consider extending this riparian buffer width. Second, the CDC 422-11's approval criteria for detailed environmental report fails to meet the requirements for alternative approval processes that are outlined in ORS 197A400, and therefore should be removed from A Engrossed Ordinance 902. I will do my best to summarize my argument in the next 30 seconds. Under the needed housing statute, a local government, in addition to approval process for a needed housing based on clear and objective standards, may adopt and apply an alternative approval process. Among the requirements for this alternative approach includes approval criteria that authorize a density at or above the density level authorized in the original approval process. And we find that the language in 422-11 lacks meaningful standards addressing density levels. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Goldman, and I want to assure you that we did receive your written testimony, so that is included in the record, as is written testimony from Mr. Hamburg, Ms. Stone, and Ms. Nagel.
All right. Next, we have Joanne Delmonico. Joanne, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, I'm Joanne Delmonico. I live in Cedar Mill. Thank you to Chair Harrington and the Commissioners for hearing my testimony tonight. I wanted to make reference to the Engrossed Ordinance 901 and 902, but particularly 902, excuse me, the mitigation portion, which is, you know, CDC 422-11.2 allows for, requires mitigation and a requirement that 80% of the trees and shrubs that are, saplings, I should say, that are planted remain, you know, survive after two years. But there's no enforcement of this. There's no monitoring. I don't think there ever has been. So I don't really understand how you can have this mitigation requirement without any follow-up. I think we all know, or I know, living next to a site that was enhanced, that the, many of the trees and saplings, I should say, and shrubs did not survive, and there was no follow-up. There was no replanting. There was no monitoring. So I don't under, you know, again, don't understand how you can have, excuse me, an ordinance for this, but it's not followed in there again. You know, maybe Clean Water Services or SOLV, or, you know, there could be some agencies that could work with LUT to, to provide some enforcement and monitoring of these mitigated areas, because otherwise, it's, it's just a waste of resources. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Next, Madam Chair, we have Deanna Johnson. Deanna, can you hear us?
I can. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can. Please go ahead.
Yes. Hello, everyone. My name is Deanna Johnson. I've been a resident of Aloha, Beaverton, for the last 23 years, I think it is. One of the reasons why I wanted to speak today is the fact that Clean Water Services does not offer any type of financial assistance to its low-income residents, while the costs continue to rise. First off, we're not adequately given any notice of rate increases before they take effect, and from what I understand, you guys are the governing board for Clean Water Services, and I wanted to see if there's any way that you guys can maybe open a dialogue with them to see if they can implement some type of financial assistance going forward. Now, while I did call the number on your website a couple of weeks ago, I was referred to the Chief of Staff, Elizabeth Edwards. I left her voicemail. She couldn't be bothered to return my phone call, but when I did address the same question to one of the public meetings, I did get a phone call back from a public relations coordinator at Clean Water Services, and she's been working on this as well. So I, I think going forward, I'd actually like maybe for the committee to see if they can actually engage them with a formal conversation, since Tualton Valley Water has actually put forth two meetings this past month to actually discuss water rate increases, and the CFO and the CEO both attended that call, which is something I would love for Clean Water Services to implement as well. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. You were actually testifying on two land use ordinances, Ordinance Number 901 versus 902. We did hear your testimony, and so I assume you had intended that to be during the public comment period, and we will treat it as such. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Clerk Moss, anyone else for the public hearing for Ordinance Numbers 901 or 902?
Yes, Madam Chair, we have Jim Long. Jim, can you hear us? Can you unmute, Jim?
My mouse isn't working as good as it could, so it took me a while to unmute.
Okay, but we can hear you, Mr. Long.
That's good. How long, I'm, I'm talking for a CPO 4M. How many minutes do I have? Is two?
I can't remember for land use ordinances.
Yes, just give me one minute. Let me review.
Hang tight there, Mr. Long. We'll, we'll check our rules of procedures.
So, Madam Chair, for ordinances, at the initial public hearing, members of groups, individuals representing groups have five minutes, as recognized by the providing chair. Thereafter, it is five, also five minutes for groups.
So there you go, Mr. Long. Which CPO are you representing?
4M. Metzger, Tigard, East Durham.
Great. So if we could set the timer to five minutes, please? Go ahead, Mr. Long.
CPO 4M supports the testimony from Ken Dobson and the Tualton River Keepers, and we support further and gradual engrossment of these ordinances. We appreciate the county's efforts made regarding homelessness of humans. The county also needs to continue to provide habitat for wildlife to maintain the balance of nature. Washington County residents love wildlife, providing bird feeders, bird baths, birdhouses, sewer, as well as feeding many other creatures. However, it is unclear as how these proposed ordinance will protect future generations of habitat for wildlife. of habitat for wildlife. It's un, goal, Goal Five of the state land use law, the purpose is to protect natural resources and open spaces, including significant natural resources, inside and outside the urban growth boundary. It is unclear why parcels of land under one-half acres are not being considered when some of them may border a waterway and are necessary corridors for wildlife movement. How many half-acre plots in total are being, are not being protected? We agree there is insufficient level of protection for significant natural resources, as well as inadequate county monitoring enforcement of tree mitigation replanting. Who will keep track of that? Too much allowance for road and bridge construction in significant natural resources is a violation of Goal Five of the land use law. The CDC's lack of required mitigation measures for construction of selected public transportation facilities outside the UGB is in direct opposition to Goal Five. How are habitat areas identified? There needs to be accurate accuracy of mapped resources on specific properties. The ESE analysis loses its objectivity due to the subjectiveness of decision-makers. Mitigation should be local and monitored. Four years ago, the county's habitat assessment guidelines were approved, but they were appealed by CPO 4M and biologist Susan Bielke, and they were remanded by the Oregon Lubbock. We cannot see habitat assessment guidelines now. It's simply not clear. The draft habitat inventory report does not clearly outline assessments of properties. A review of the draft habitat inventory shows that it's just a broad inventory, but not guidelines of how to assess the quality of the specific habitats. Back on September 4th, I attended the planning commission meeting where they refer these ordinances for your consideration. I did not hear that any, that any of the points in Ken Dobson's letter were, was even discussed and considered by the planning commission. Some language in the proposed regulations are not clear and objective. Terms we don't understand include, quote, "potential mitigation," unquote, quote, "alternative approval processes," unquote. And we're concerned, what are the new environmental and ecological costs to these proposals? Now, I have a suggestion, an idea that, you know, you might take, take hold of. It's kind of a legal one. For clarity and to prevent future confusion and minimize liabilities, property deeds should state significant natural resource, SNRs, are on the property. I know that's not part of this, but it's something you can do separately, and it seems like that would be something that would minimize your liabilities and help everybody in the long run. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Long, and thank you for representing the thoughts and opinions of CPO 4M this evening.
Clerk Mas, anyone else? That concludes the list of sign-ups that we had for this public hearing.
Great. And with that, I will close tonight's public hearing. And before I ask for a motion to continue the public hearing to November 5th, I'd like to ask staff a couple of questions, if I might. And while you're sitting here, Commissioner Willie was fast-fingered on his tablet and reminded me that we have a great website that covers significant natural resources and speaks very well to the purpose of them and what it's all about. And I appreciate that resource. I also have a little bit of a recollection of the staff presentation that you gave us at the meeting where we did the engrossment. And I recall you're talking about where these ordinances would apply and not apply, and a required process, and then an alternative process. And I'm hoping November 5th that we'll have time in the meeting so you can do that fuller presentation. But one of the reasons why I wanted to call you up for a question is with regard to Mr. Whitman's question about process for the maps. Is there a short answer? I don't even know if he's still in the audience, but is there a short answer that you can give him or contact information that he might find on the web to follow up with his question?
Thank you, Chair Harrington. After last, after the last meeting on October 1st, I met with Mr. Whitman. We exchanged emails, and I told him we were proposing in the future as a possible work session, work program topic to have a new omnibus ordinance. We anticipated that there might be some more changes to the maps that will be needed, and that could be reviewed under that process. So we're gathering those in a file. We're going to propose that as a work program task to you, and his, his information is included in that request.
Or further improvement. Okay. Terrific. Thank you. So, let's see. I wanted to make sure that I made a reference to the website. I already made a reference to the written testimony, so I have all my questions answered. Commissioner Willie, you have a question?
Two things came, excuse me, came out of the, the testimony that I heard. One is, it's great to have mitigation areas, but if we don't have any follow-up and enforcement, then they die. And obviously, I think that's important, so I don't know if that's even possible or not, but if you could please follow up with that. And then the other is, as we heard from the CPO individual, significant natural resources being listed on the property description, and I'm assuming that's in our property tax roll, so at least it's clear and transparent that there, there are significant natural resources on the property. Again, I don't even know if that's possible, but I just heard those two things, and I thought, well, that's kind of basic stuff. So would that be possible? Could you come back maybe at the next week or two weeks when we come back and, and answer those, unless you can answer them right now?
Well, I think it's, oops. I think it's, it's a great question. I would like to propose that staff takes the question and comes back, because I know there are all kinds of limitations on what our property tax bills can include, and state requirements, and so on and so forth. So I think our staff will have to meet with Joe Nelson and company out of our great assessment and taxation department.
We'll be prepared to answer that on November 5th when we come back.
Thank you.
Terrific. Any other Commissioner questions? Commissioner Rogers? No? Okay. Go ahead. I just want to say thank you for the work that you've done in relationship to reaching out to these people that have special cases. I came to you with a list of questions that I had after the last testimony, and I really appreciate the, how detailed your information back to our constituents has been. So thank you. Thank you for coming back for more questions. So at this juncture, I'd like to ask for a motion to continue the hearing for A engrossed ordinances 901 and 902 to date certain November 5th, 2024. So moved?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Clerk Mas, could you do the roll, please?
Certainly, Chair Harrington. Commissioner Trese?
Yes.
Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Yes.
Vice Chair Fai?
Aye.
Chair Harrington.
Yes. The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Thank you, colleagues. Next, we'll move on to our action item. And first, I need to ask for a motion to read ordinance number 904 by title only.
So moved.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously. Ms. Duke Driesing, could you do us the honors, please?
Yes, Madam Chair. Ordinance number 904, an ordinance amending the Washington County Code relating to administrative authority and the Administrative Manual.
Thank you. So the purpose of tonight is to simply read that ordinance by title only into the record. This is an ordinance, well, she already said it, sorry. So at this juncture, I would like to ask for a motion to schedule ordinance number 904 for a second reading and public hearing on Tuesday, November 19th, 2024. So moved by Commissioner Rogers. Do we have a second? A second from Commissioner Willie. All those in favor, please. Actually, roll call.
Certainly, Madam Chair. Commissioner Willie?
Yes.
Commissioner Trese?
Yes.
Commissioner Rogers?
Aye.
Vice Chair Fai?
Aye.
Chair Harrington.
Yes. The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. All things ordinances, roll call. Remember the rule, Catherine. All right. Next, we have our second public comment period for this evening. This is an opportunity for members of our community to speak for up to five minutes an individual. We do have a maximum of 30 minutes on this, which means if you do not use all of your five minutes, then we get to hear from more people. Clerk Mas, who do we have who wishes to come address this this evening?
All right. The first two we have is Kevin Pate and Karen Schmidlin. Please come forth.
Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Kevin Pate, a U.S. citizen of Washington County, resident for 30 years. On October 1st, I spoke to you about the issue of non-citizens on our voter rolls. Recently, Ken Paxton, the Attorney General of Texas, wrote a letter to U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services, USCIS, asking them to help Texas fulfill its obligations to comply with federal and state election laws, which prohibit non-U.S. citizens from voting. He submitted to them a list of individuals whose citizenship status is unconfirmed and asked for their citizenship and immigration status. He referred to 8 U.S. Code 1373, which I have provided to you, entitled, "Communication Between Government Agencies and the Immigration and Naturalization Service." Section A of the code states, notwithstanding any other provision of federal, state, or local law, a federal, state, or local government entity or official may not prohibit or in any way restrict any government entity or official from sending to or receiving from the Immigration and Naturalization Service information regarding the citizenship or immigration status lawful or unlawful of any individual. Section C states, "The Immigration and Naturalization Service shall respond to an inquiry by a federal, state, or local government agency seeking to verify or ascertain the citizenship or immigration status of any individual within the jurisdiction of the agency for any purpose authorized by law by providing the requested verification or status information." This means that our county has the ability to ask the immigration status of anyone on the voter rolls, and the USCIS is required by law to provide the information. So all the county has to do is ask. Please ask and ensure that non-citizens do not vote. And I should add, it is your constitutional duty to enforce the law and ensure that only U.S. citizens vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pate. And we'll move on now to Ms. Schmidlin.
Yes. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. My name is Karen Schmidlin. I'm a 40-year resident of Washington County. I spoke to you last week regarding election observation, and now with the election in full swing, I'm asking again you to direct the elections office to give us full access, meaning to be in the same room with the workers in these areas, the receiving room where the ballots are received and scanned, the boards room where the ballots are tabulated, and the signature verification area. At the October 1st Commissioners' meeting, Dan Forrester reported that 166 Yuakava or overseas ballots had already been received, and we want to observe firsthand their retrieval, because they come in over the Internet, their signature verification duplication and tabulation. We also, we want to observe the retrieval of election results and their uploading to the state. Dan said that results are reported three times on election day and then each Friday until certification. But there's a lot of other days that they're counting those votes, so that's a lot of time in between reporting those numbers. We're, we're requesting that all election results reported to the state at any date and time are first posted publicly at the county prior to being sent to the state. Since ballots are counted over the course of several days before, on, and after the election day, we ask that the current ballot counts are posted at the county at the beginning and the end of every day, whether or not they're reported to the state on that day. With in-person observation, we want to be able to submit meaningful, real-time challenges to processes or signatures, as has been done historically. This inability for citizens to conduct meaningful observation of their elections is a new phenomenon. After May's primary election, several of us were invited to observe the risk-limiting audit in person with no problems whatsoever, and that was great. It was, it was really nice to be able to observe in, in person, in the same room, and to be able to really see what was going on. And, and that was great. But we insist on in-person, meaningful observation of our entire election.
Thank you, ma'am. Clerk Mas, who do we have next?
Yes. Next, Madam Chair, we have Roger Law and Jill Brandt.
Go ahead, Mr. Brandt. That's what I just said. Roger Law?
Yes.
Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Law.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I am Roger Law, a resident of Washington County for 42 years. I'd like to talk about the election tabulation system used in our county. On October 1st, during his presentation to you, Dan Forrester said the system is kept separate from external networks and the Internet, and that it does not have wireless capacity, nor is it hackable. Please look at the two documents I have provided. The first is page 24 of Washington County's Clear Ballot Contract executed on the 30th of October, 2015. As you can see, the contract includes Dell Precision M2800 mobile workstations, which run the tabulators and administer the elections. Details on these off-the-shelf laptops are provided in the second document, a review by PC Magazine. The highlighted areas on the second page show they come pre-wired with Wi-Fi and Ethernet. They're accessible to the Internet. From our discussion with elections office personnel, these same laptops are still in use, with two additional ones added in about 2018. In her April 14th, 2022 letter, supporting county during the Washington County versus Tim Sypple lawsuit, Attorney General, Oregon Attorney General Ellen Rosenbloom wrote, "The National Academy of Sciences authoritative report on election security squarely rejects Mr. Sypple's claim that cybersecurity is unnecessary for a system that is not connected to the Internet." Then, continued, "Even when the systems are not directly connected to the networks, they are vulnerable to attack through physical or wireless access. Our entire voting system is online, accessible, including tabulators, scanners, databases, signatures, and results uploads. Let Washington County be the first to disband the use of all voting machines and bring secure, bring secure, security, trust, accuracy, and transparency back to our elections. We'd love to meet with you and discuss how to make this happen." Thank you, and thank you for allowing the spirit of truth to speak through me.
Thank you, Mr. Law. (applause) Thank you, Mr. Law. Ms. Brandt, I'm sorry for my
No worries.
...previous name referrals. Please go ahead.
Not a problem. Okay. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I'm Jill Brandt, a six-and-a-half-year resident of Washington County. The federal government considers our elections to be critical infrastructure and offers several best practices to ensure their integrity and security. Among them is chain of custody, which is the systematic documentation and tracking of the movement and handling of ballots, equipment, data, and other election records throughout the voting process. The Election Assistance Commission, EAC, states that chain of custody is essential to a transparent and trustworthy election as it ensures that ballots and election materials have not been tampered with, establishes who had access to ballots and election equipment at all times, thereby deterring potential fraud and misconduct, clearly documents each step in the handling of election materials, making the process easy to audit and verify by independent observers. The EAC recommends two or three people document each step, includes hardware and software used for ballot creation, tabulation, and reporting results, includes electronic records and data, requires strict adherence to sound cybersecurity practices, ensures that the final count accurately reflects voters' intentions, builds public trust in the election system. The EAC further states that every election office should have written chain of custody procedures available for public inspection prior to every election, and that once a chain of custody process is initiated, it must be followed with every step documented. Commissioners, the state of Oregon has no requirement for chain of custody procedures. Therefore, the entire election process is suspect and not secure. Please consider the current ballot flow diagram on Page 2 I have shared with you, and note all the places ballots travel. First, the print house, where ballots are printed. It's in Bend, where Washington County residents have no oversight of documentation or process. Next, the mailhouse, where ballots are mailed out, also in Bend, where Washington County residents have no oversight of documentation or process. Ballots are then processed at the post office, which we have toured and found and observed lax control of ballots. Then ballots are delivered by lone postal carriers or contractors without witness or oversight. Ballots are delivered to voters, or to deceased individuals, or to those who no longer live at given addresses. Many are undeliverable. Ballots returned to the post office are processed again, excuse me, processed again with the same lax controls and delivered to the Elections Office by lone postal carriers or contractors. Alternatively, ballots placed in drop boxes have no oversight or security cameras. Ballots are retrieved and taken to the Elections Office with minimal, if any, documentation. At the Elections Office, ballots and ballot envelopes are in various locations and may be subject to tampering. There is no consistent process for handling replacement ballots, so ballot audits cannot be done. Retrieval and processing of overseas votes have no oversight whatsoever. Signature verification processes are online and subject to hacking. Tabulation processes are also subject to hacking. Results are not posted internally but are reported electronically by one person using a thumb drive with no oversight. Online reporting is also hackable. Within these complex systems, many hands have access to ballots, software, data, documents, memory devices, and other assets. Without chain of custody documentation, we cannot have confidence that our elections are secure and trustworthy. Simply put, vote by mail is in direct opposition to secure elections. The disastrous state of our voter rolls further amplifies this level of untrustworthiness. In many ways, our votes are more valuable than currency and should be handled as money in a bank setting. Vote by mail may be convenient, but it is not secure. Please refer to the in-precent ballot flow schematic. It's on the third page. This is an illustration of a secure election. Ballots are kept in one place with constant oversight by many people, strict ballot controls or audits, and documentation. This is ultimately what we would like to see. For the current election, we would like you to direct the Elections Office to provide a copy of their written chain of custody procedures with documentation of each step, provide access to all elections processes, provide access to all election records with no fees, as it is in the public interest, and make available to the public morning and evening printouts of daily ballot counts and of aggregate results prior to reporting to the state. Thank you for your attention to this matter.
Thank you. Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
Next, Madam Chair, we have Jill Latre and Bob Terry.
How are we doing on our 30 minutes?
We are doing good, so we will probably have room for one more five-minute after these two.
Great. Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Latre.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Jill Latre. I'm a U.S. citizen, elected official, and have been a resident of Washington County for 33 years. On February 2nd, 2024, prior to the King City Special Recall Election, I attended the logic and accuracy test of the voting machines at the Elections Office. Election supervisor Michael Richter described the process, led the test, and answered my questions. He was assisted by other election staff. Michael said that the test should go pretty quickly since there were only two precinct types in this special election. I was the only observer present. Six tabulators were tested, one through six. In testing mode, a target card or sheet is used to identify each batch of ballots. In this case, the voting scenarios included all blank ballots, first oval chosen, second oval chosen, and all ovals chosen. I learned the test ballots were created and tabulated in advance at the election office. For some tests, the ballots are created by the print house in Bend. Those results served as the control numbers for the public test. The public test results are supposed to match the controls, thereby demonstrating that the tabulators are counting properly. I learned that each public test is recorded as a unique election and thereby kept separate from the actual election. That morning, during the all ovals chosen test A17, the computer on Tabulator 5 gave an error message. The error was reported to Michael, who checked the computer, said it was okay, and chose the finish option. When they printed out the test results and compared it to the control, they immediately saw the results did not match. The control number was 12, and the test number was 10. The vote was undercounted by two, which is a 17% difference. They determined they needed to delete the batch, rerun test A17, including the target sheet and ballots. Dan Forrester, Elections Division Manager, entered the room about that time to see how things were going and saw the delete and rerun in progress. He spoke with Michael and asked him the color of the error message, whether it was yellow or red. Dan informed me a red error message is considered fatal and required deleting and rerunning, but there's a different protocol for yellow error messages. I was not allowed near the tabulator, so I did not see what color the error message was. After rerunning the batch, they printed out a new report. Everything checked out, and the initial report was discarded. I asked if the new report would be given a new test number. I was told it would not. It would simply replace the first test A17. The actions would only be recorded in the application logs. Dan said this event wouldn't happen in a real election because an error message would result. I stated an error message was reported, checked, and thought to be okay. The King City recall election was decided by 47, 28, 24, and 53 votes, a margin of 1% to 3%. Tabulation errors such as the one that occurred during the February 2 logic and accuracy test could certainly change the results of that election. Again, on May 10, 2024, I attended the logic and accuracy test for the primary election. Several other observers were in attendance that day. Once again, Michael Richter led the test, this time with the assistance from several other election staff. The primary election was much larger, requiring 1,097 ballot styles. Although not all styles were tested, 1,500 ballots were tested for all blank ballots, first ovals, all ovals, and every race represented. Every race represented required the most ballots, so they were split into three groups and counted on tabulators 4, 5, and 6. The test batch on Tabulator 5 resulted in 221 more ballots than the control. The batch was run a second time. Again, it didn't match the control. There was a lot of checking and double-checking and consultation with Dan. In the end, Dan said the discrepancy was likely the result of human error, which must have occurred on the control run on April 18. Their solution was to create a new control batch that day to match the test batch. I have photos of the two control batches and the dates they were created. A co-observer and I were able to review both test batches' results and compare some of the numbers. On one race, we found a discrepancy of 231 votes between the first test batch and the results in the second. This experience was disturbing. I have only highlighted a few of the events that happened. None of these situations or measures are reported on the final logic and accuracy reports, only that the test results matched the controls. If there were this many problems and discrepancies when the results were predetermined, what could be happening when the tabulators are counting real ballots without controls and using a completely different ballot definition file or a set of rules? As Commissioners, it's your responsibility to ensure we have accurate elections in our county. Transparent hand-counting process in each precinct would give us reliable, accurate results that are easily audible, and it's well within your rights and duty
Thank you, Ms. Latre.
...as Commissioners, to make this happen using home rule. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Latre. Mr. Terry, go ahead.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. I'm Bob Terry, former Washington County Commissioner, standing with our fellow citizens and elected officials and asking for satisfaction in the things that we have requested from you over the past month regarding our elections. So far, we have asked far. A working session where we can present our findings and begin a dialogue instead of a one-way conversation. Having heard so many requests from our fellow citizens and elected officials who are obviously concerned, engaged, and persistent, we have had no feedback from you. The Board has made no effort to even acknowledge your hearing what we are saying. By which date can we expect to schedule a work session or to meet with you in some other form where we can engage in dialogue? We want to include the Board of Commissioners and other staff as you see fit and necessary. On this document, which I have already given to your clerk to give to you your signature and hopefully your approval on a USA resolution for a legally valid 2024 election. This is important to all citizens, including our Board. I only ask that you understand what we're asking for. In-person observation of all election processes, including ballot receiving, scanning, signature verification, processing, and tabulation, including overseas and special-needs ballots, known as Aquala. The ability to question and challenge process and signatures for within the all-ballot handling and reporting areas of the Elections Office so that observation is meaningful. Where of us as our elected officials, we have already observed in-person a risk-limiting audit conducted after the primary election. Others may be vetted in advance so that workers feel comfortable. In-person observations of elections' results retrieval, uploading to the state, elections' results to be posted in the county prior to submission to the state. On every occasion, results are reported. Also, we have asked for tabulation results to be posted each morning and night. On all days, ballots are concluded whether or not they are reported to the state on those days. As Dan pointed out, on October 1st, you, the Board of Commissioners, have the right to make these changes to elections' reporting. The application of home rule, which is in our state constitution and our Washington County Charter, home rule allows us to separate, as a county, elections from state centralized databases, practices, and systems. Disbanding the use of electronic voting equipment and replacing it with a less expensive and more efficient, transparent, secure, and easily auditable system which can provide certified results on Election Day and has proven results from past elections, not in this county but elsewhere in the state and in other states within our union. The county to conduct the U.S. Citizenship and Immigration Services to assert the citizenship and immigration status of those on the voter's rolls who are unconfirmed citizens and to be removed, not just inactivated, those who should not be on the rolls. Creation of an election task force to include the citizens and members of the Commissioners Board of Elections Office official and administrative staff as needed. We are prepared to begin work with you to move our county in this direction as soon as possible, starting tomorrow. I thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone else who might fit within the 30 minutes?
So, the last person we have within the 30 minutes is Charlie Henderson. Charlie?
Hello, Mr. Henderson. You're the closer.
Harrington, thank you. You're lucky.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Charlie Henderson. I'm a public servant, a veteran, but tonight I'm here as a constituent of Washington County to call upon this board to unanimously adopt the draft resolution in front of you, calling for not only a ceasefire to the ongoing genocide in the Middle East that has taken the lives of hundreds of thousands of innocent men, women, and children, but more importantly, publicly expressing support for the withholding of any additional weapons shipments to Israel due to the countless human rights violations. Over the past year, in response to a brutal terror attack, Israel's retaliation has been disproportionate, decimating the Palestinian population. Billions of people around the world, millions of Americans, and tens of thousands of Oregonians have watched with our own eyes as babies have been blown to pieces with U.S.-supplied weapons and as children have been sniped in the heads and hearts by Israeli snipers, all while being gaslit that it wasn't so. We've seen countless aid workers, journalists, and medics systematically targeted. Hospitals, universities, churches, mosques, residential homes, and so-called safe zones, all bombed, leveled, and set ablaze. We've witnessed countless war crimes documented by not only brave journalists on the ground, but by the Israeli military itself through their own posts to social media. We've seen torture and the use of rape on Palestinian detainees, which was then defended by certain officials. We've listened to the cries of then-six-year-old Hinra Jabn as she was trapped in a car from Israeli gunfire calling for help, her entire family having been killed, only to witness both she and the medics that were rushing to save her gunned down and hailed bullets. All of this funded and given cover by our government through near-daily briefings from the State Department and Pentagon where journalists are met with gaslighting, half-truths, contempt, and blatant hypocrisy. I've personally seen more videos than I can stomach of babies no older than my own son slowly starving to death, gasping their last breaths. Their parents have often either been killed or are simply unable to do anything due to the blocking of food, aid, water, and medicine by Israel, and are forced to watch their newborns and children slowly die in front of them. Just last week, in fact, Palestinians outside of a hospital sheltering in tents were bombed. The end result was that the world got to see these refugees incinerated as their loved ones frantically tried to put the fire out to no avail. An incredible young man of 19 years old, Shabon Adaloo, still hooked up to his IV, can be seen engulfed in flames. He and his mother both incinerated in that attack. There are thousands of stories just like these, and five minutes isn't enough time to do justice to what we've seen unfold over the past year. So, why am I here? I recognize the obvious, that this board calling for a ceasefire and supporting an arms embargo isn't going to just make this genocide magically stop. But what it will do is force our congressional representatives to reckon with the fact that Oregon's two most populated counties have stood up and boldly stated that enough is enough. At the same time that we sit here wondering how to deal with budget problems at home regarding the many issues that we face, billions of our own tax dollars are being spent to kill kids on the other side of the planet. Conservatively, over 100,000 Palestinians, over 1,000 Lebanese, a record number of UN workers and journalists have all been killed by an Israeli government that is increasingly hell-bent on dragging our country into another regional war. And let me be clear about something. If anyone listening to this is confused or recoiling or thinking that this is a "both sides are bad" issue, simply put, you haven't been paying attention. And to a point, you could be forgiven, given how our government and media work to manufacture consent. But the information is out there, and willful ignorance is not an excuse. I've also provided each of you reports of everything that I mentioned here tonight, as well as a few others, as you consider the resolution before you. I'm just one constituent, but I know that there are other citizens of Washington County who have woken up each morning to some new atrocity being livestreamed to their phone or computer just like I have. I also know that I'm not the only one who has worked for over a year to get my congressional representatives to actually do the right thing through emailing, calling, and pleading with them directly. We're fortunate to have someone like Senator Merkley, who has been a steadfast champion of human rights throughout this entire conflict, but one senator isn't enough, and Oregon can and must do better. This board can make a difference. Let me conclude with this. If you purport to care about human rights, about respecting U.S. and international law, about giving a voice to marginalized people, about the safety of our active-duty military, about this nation having any legitimacy on the world stage to tackle bigger problems, or even just being fiscally responsible so that we can more meaningfully deal with the many that we can more meaningfully deal with the many issues facing Washington County's citizens here at home, you must publicly support both a ceasefire and the conditioning of weapons to a government that has made every single one of us less safe. Please adopt the resolution in front of you and prove that when we claim to care, that it's more than just window-dressing to make us feel good about ourselves. With these last few seconds, I'll share this quote from Malcolm X. "If you're not careful, the newspapers will have you hating the people who are being oppressed and loving the people who are doing the oppressing." Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Henderson. And with that, that brings our Public Communication Section to a close. Ms. Duke Dreesen, I have a question for you as county counsel. We have heard from various folks over the last two, three meetings citing the county's Home Rule Charter. Could you speak to the sources of requirements for elections and if, as a Home Rule county, we can override those requirements?
Thank you for the question, Madam Chair. Briefly, Washington County's Home Rule Charter does not allow the county to ignore, change, or veer from its obligations and responsibilities under both state and federal elections laws and rules. The statutorily required approval of elections process preempts Oregon Home Rule counties like Washington County from having complete decision-making authority and control over how to administer the election process.
Thank you for providing that clarity tonight. I appreciate it. Next, we'll move on to Board announcements. Our future meetings are as such. Next Tuesday, October 29th, we will be holding an executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660 sub 2 sub A for the employment of a public employee, starting at nine o'clock. We're also reserving Wednesday, October 30th, as such, if needed, at nine a.m. Friday, November 1st, we will have a Clean Water Services Board of Directors Learning Day, starting at nine a.m. On Tuesday, November 5th, Election Day, we'll have our work session, starting at nine, and then we'll pause that for our board meeting at 10 a.m. and then reconvene in work session. On Thursday, November 7th, we'll have a Board of Commissioners Roundtable, starting at nine a.m. On Tuesday, November 12th, we'll have work session all day, starting at nine. On Tuesday, November 19th, we'll have a work session, starting at 1 p.m., and an evening board meeting, starting at 6:30 p.m. And the following week, Tuesday, November 26th, the week of Thanksgiving, we will not be holding Board of Commissioner meetings. That is the extent of Board announcements from me. Are there any others from the Commission tonight? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Good night, everyone.